You don't worry. Their territory is starting to settle. I have been to be to people who have had structural issues multiple times. That was on show.
Top road shows.
Yeah. Is it starting to?
The, uh, that it's sitting on is starting to shift itself. I mean, and I'll, uh.
Recording, okay.
Well, just rejoice.
All right. I am going to call this meeting of the Black Earth Village Board to order. Roll call, please.
Okay. Terry Meyer?
Here.
James Foyle?
Here.
Scott Pacha?
Here.
Pamela Randall?
Here.
Sarah Morrow is absent. Tyler Munson?
Here.
And Mitch Hoffman?
Here.
You don't report?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Group of posting a copy, the notice was delivered to the following on July eleventh, emailed to the Star News, Lake Ridge Bank, and Black Earth, posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building, Black Earth Post Office, and the Black Earth webpage. Public comment. In no public. Call one, call two, we will move on. Discussion and approval, uh, our discussion in action, approval of meeting minutes from June sixth.
I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June sixth. All in favor?
Uh, there, there's this one little typo that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, there's this one little typo, I left the meeting at six forty, not seven forty. And then I got back. I didn't leave at seven forty and get back at seven oh two.
Maybe you're time traveling.
So.
Ge- magician.
Could it, what is that? Do you have the number on that? All right.
It's somewhere.
And what was the exact time?
Yeah.
It's on towards the end, second page, uh, the seventeen point D. D.
Okay, with one change. Anything else? Any other discussion? Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion in action, request from BE events for Black Earth Field Day, August twelfth through the thir- or August, August twelfth and, excuse me, August eleventh and twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Senior packet, there's applications for the fireworks display, uh, street use application for the parade, public amusement and ampli- amplifying devices for the community park, and then a temporary quest de-license for the park.
Make a motion to approve the request from the Black Earth BE events for Black Earth Field Days. We have been off fees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Aye.
Let the record show Pamela Randall will abstain as she is a sitting committee member for the BE event. Okay. Discussion in action, quick trip operator license applications for Cyril Eddington and Erlene Wilson. Those should, you should have saw, saw in front of you.
All this, plus your plea, nothing else, no violations of our policy.
I'll make a motion to approve licensing pending the change of the Erlene Wilson to the place of employment.
Should be fees reflected as quick trip, not Hallmark. We have a motion to approve, a second.
I will second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, discussion in action for the planning commission recommendation regarding the sixteen oh seven Blue Mounds property. That is approved as well. This was through the planning commission, I believe, on June nineteenth. Yep.
And they approved it, correct?
Yes. They did approve.
This would make it, uh, two separate parcels, um, so they'd be able to own, be owned individually. Uh, so you see the red line would be the slip partially above and below, um, first and second story. Um, so this would allow an owner to actually, go more like a condo or what's that called?
Zero outline.
Zero outline duplex.
I'll move, we approve the planning commission's recommendation to, uh, do the zero outline.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the planning commission recommendation regarding the property of sixteen oh seven Blue Mounds. Any discussion?
Sure gonna make that corner look nice.
Yes.
Discussion.
Any?
No comment.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number nine, discussion in action of vandalism and security cameras at Veterans Park.
This is coming from a combination of Public Works and police committees, um, just that there's, I mean, Matt can talk a lot more since he's seen it, but I've seen the pictures that people are, of unknown, unknown people are vandalizing the restroom, um, with graffiti, there's burned things.
With burnt towels, um, and it's been, of course, over the years, we've had issues here and there. It was, these are growing and moving out, maybe a new batch that comes in, um. Railings for, uh, that's part, community park, or around.
In particular.
I, I don't know, I'm in, just an opinion. Uh, graffiti wise, um, we tried to get what we could off and everything's.
You can get them now, self-sustained enough that.
Yeah.
You know, you can go back and look at the recording, they record for like eight months.
Yep. And I don't know.
And prices are way down now, um.
I don't have any recommendations, I know police has something specific.
So are you talking live cameras, like a, a cellular?
They, they wanted, they're standing.
They make, they make something that are.
Trail cam?
Yeah, trail cam or something.
And then it just takes pictures when it sees motion.
Um, I think it's just gonna open for discussion, what does the board feel like would be the best option? Do you want some real live action? Or is it just photos?
I think we need live action if that's gonna track.
I, I think you can get a set for like five, six cameras for under three hundred bucks. It records, goes into itself, records for eight months, you can go back and look at it.
Only, that only works if they have wifi though.
No, 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 these are self.
Yeah, they go on a loop.
I did the.
And it goes right, it, you would have to leave the box, you, somebody would have to go check it.
Right, you'd have to go.
After, but you would get.
Put the information in, I think.
You could, you could do that, yeah.
I think the live action would be.
Yeah.
The library had extended their wifi last.
Oh, that's right, enough work over there.
Reach it to, that expand their options, but that was a limited.
Parcel's gonna meet later, maybe we could, uh, give it to parks to look into?
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Make a recommendation back to the board.
Make a recommendation back.
I would just make sure that what, if we're gonna do that for the purpose of trying to cut down on vandalism, I don't know if that's a police record of some sort that needs to be considered.
It would only be if there's vandalism and they, they need it for evidence.
Yeah.
Before that, it's not, it's village.
But, but what I'm saying, like. You can make it live too, and put it, share it on the internet.
I just know, I just know that like City of Madison has, and this is city, not Dane County, but like the city has an ordinance that limits, strictly limits the amount of surveillance that the city can do on the public. So like cameras have to be very strictly only on public right of way or what, like you can't have a house in the background or something like that.
That makes sense.
So, that's just the thing that I'm talking about, that you have to make sure. Yeah.
It's pretty can be.
And, and then, and then with that, with that, there might be some sort of records retention policy that we could, that we could inadvertently get involved in, that we don't wanna be involved in.
We can make so.
So, yeah.
Nice thing.
Yeah, I, I, and I don't know because we have.
I, I think it just, it needs.
Because we have the Dane County, Dane County Police, you know, or whatever.
Doesn't matter.
I don't know which.
They follow our ordinance.
They follow our ordinance, okay. So, we might just wanna back to that and just say, you know, video would be retained for eight months, eight months or something like that.
Has it been discussed at police yet? It's a, um, it's.
We did a little bit.
Long time ago.
Well, we did. I think we just did too, a little bit, so.
So parks is the next logic, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need a formal motion to move it to parks or just make a recom- unrecommended that move to parks for discussion?
Would you add that?
And then come back to the board with their recommendation agenda, um, it might take us a couple months to. Oh, yeah, and then come back with, you know.
That may have a call on Thursday.
Shooting for February install.
Company?
Okay. Be nice if I go through parks and come back with some specific recommendations and maybe some vendor ideas.
And prices, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Are ball parks that you guys would look for, or are you just really?
Well, I'd put it at that ballpark.
Need to get in and take a look around.
It's a good thing you have a day job.
Sorry, Danny.
All right.
Some of ours deep into that was, uh, pretty stuff, I would.
Well, if the wifi reaches, it makes it pretty easy, so.
Yeah.
Okay. We good on that? We're good. Um, number ten, discussion in action of the twenty twenty-four Village reevaluation, choosing a revaluation level.
So, um, I got a letter last fall after, you know, I think it was just before budget, but it says, you must do this. Um, we had checked with our auditors and they were booked, they couldn't do it this year. They were already booked out through the year, so it will be next year and we kinda got a slot already. Um, but there's two types of reval. Um, there's a drive-by, kind of.
Exterior.
And then a full interior-exterior. Both of them are legal, it's what's the price difference and, and what do we wanna spend the money on? So. We did budget half of it for last year.
I'm worried just in the exterior.
Sixteen thousand right now.
Huh?
Approximately sixteen thousand in, right now.
That's what we.
Oh, how much we have.
It's gonna be thirty-some thousand.
I was gonna say, and it's really expensive, we do the whole.
I thought we talked about this one other time.
Well, last time they did a walk-through, so I, I think we should do a drive-by.
It's not like they actually, they don't actually change anything when they come in anyways, really.
Not unless they can prove what's where, when, how, why.
Yeah. And, you know, didn't we talk that we're already gonna be, we haven't done this for a long time, so people are gonna be kinda shocked.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd rather not have them shocked with having people wanting to go through their house.
This house went up a hundred thousand dollars in the.
By a drive-by or a walk-through?
Exterior.
Exterior only?
So I think we are probab- I think the last time, we're about sixty-seven percent of actual, or it's probably down now, lower than that. So we're, we're probably sixty to sixty-five percent of actual value anyways. And I know when the value goes up, it really, and, you know, where people get confused is they're, think their taxes are going up because they gained a hundred thousand. Mill rate changes, it's not like you're just gonna pay more taxes, not, as long as everybody goes up equally. Now, if your house, it's different if you go up and your neighbor don't, right? So. So it's important for people to under, or for us to explain it to people if they ask the right way, so.
And so are we, are we wanting to make that decision about whether we do a walk-through or a drive-by tonight?
Like, I think we, we need to, um, and then need to get it, wind up to say, this is what we're doing and not get our time slot.
Yeah.
If we don't do it, this, within this next year, the state's gonna do it, and they're gonna charge us.
Yeah.
Then we would need to move on.
Yeah.
So we would be looking for.
But Mitch, on the mill rate or whatever that you mentioned, like, just because your home value goes up a hundred thousand doesn't necessarily mean, you know, if it's worth a hundred and it goes up a hundred, you're not gonna pay double.
No.
But is that determined strictly by the Village of Black Earth, or is there also some portion also determined by Dane County?
It's done by the Village of Black Earth, and it's done by, um, sales of houses similar.
Yeah.
In record to what you had.
Okay.
So, and then obviously if somebody pulls a building permit, that, that's a little different, either it goes up because they've done remodel or.
Yeah.
Different, so. But if your house doubles and everybody houses, house doubles, you're not, nobody's gonna pay more taxes on it. No rate would go down.
Last time was twenty sixteen.
Yeah, so we have to get it, yeah, that's, you know.
Other things have changed.
We are getting.
That kinda equal up, they dropped everybody's land value.
They did, I was very happy. I'm like, alrighty.
What we would be looking for is a recommendation on what type we would like, and then so Danny can move forward with the.
So I'll make a motion that we.
What do they call them?
One more, one more thing on the discussion then. Are we gonna go with a four-year deal that they're gonna stick with us and?
We're under contract right now.
We're already contracted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, what do they call it? One's an in-house, one's a what?
Full inspection exterior only.
Do you have a home agreement?
Exterior only, yep.
And so this is a five-year plan where they would basically start with, and do a fifth of the village each year?
No, they do it all.
The entire village.
Do it all in one year and then we just pay them over five years?
No. So it'd be.
Oh, those are maintenance.
So our contract is through twenty twenty-seven, as you can see, the maintenance years, that's with.
We pay that anyways.
Keeping the property records, doing all things, getting the building permits.
Order review.
Bottom has the full section exterior only, so that would be on top of those fees. So, the thirty-nine thousand for the full section, the thirty-one five for the exterior only.
And that, of that, we already have sixteen that was already set for this year, but.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking for the next in our twenty-four budget.
And if we do the same thing, we'll be covered.
Yeah, we'll be covered, so.
Um, when I was also talking for this, something that we can talk about more for budget, it talks about, um, the chart, there's a interim market update, that's something to think about, where they're just coming in to do a little spot check, so it doesn't get so out of whack and then have a big pressure on some, a lot of activity, so, that's something else to think about.
And that's, that's what the.
But for now, we have to do either the full or.
And that, that chart is what the interim market update for eleven thousand dollars is for?
Is that something that we need?
All right, so I'll make a motion to, uh, approve an exterior-only revaluation assessment.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, right?
Yep, that's it, for twenty twenty-four.
For twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion or question? Everybody good with?
Well, the interim market update, does that mean like if the bottom falls out or interest rates go to twenty-one percent? Nobody's buying anything and values go crashing or anything, it will adjust it, they will come in and adjust it?
Yeah, it was, it just kinda sees what the current, you know, takes the temperature of what your toll and the pool temperature every so often, so it's not such a huge.
So it isn't every seven years we're jumping and doing something.
But does that, does that, does that count for the evaluation to the state for the percentage of actual? Probably not.
Help, so we have to be within ninety percent of, so between ninety, a hundred percent is obviously where they.
And you're good till you get down to seventy and then they start blocking.
Below ninety, and we've been below ninety.
Well, the letter I got said seventy from the state.
Well, we're below seventy, which is.
Yeah, no, no, I know.
But we have to be within between ninety and a hundred percent of.
And this will keep us between the ninety and a hundred?
This will get us, hopefully there, there's been a case that, I don't remember if it was DeForest or somewhere in Dane County where they did the revale and then next year, because the, because they did it in twenty twenty, and then the market went. And they were almost out of the ninety percent again.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
We're kinda catching them at the top, aren't we?
Yeah.
Is that how everybody feels?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eleven, discussion in action of extraterritorial zoning, CMS approval parcel, senior packet, it's the Schultz Road parcel. Boundary issue, they're just.
They're within a mile and a half of our boundaries, so we get notified by the county. So it's just kind of a FYI to the board of what's happening in the area, um.
Does it require our approval, or was it just an informational?
So this will be, um, you guys will have to approve it for me to sign that it was approved by you guys. Um, so on the very last page, it just says that it was approved by, uh, for me to, has everyone signed, so the county will sign, village will sign, everyone kind of in the area, anyone that agrees, and then it goes to the county for full reporting.
And by signing, does that, does that attach any of the rules to us, with the property area?
It's just, uh, kind of giving a nod, like, that we.
What am I, certified surveyor?
No, I, I think, I think what it is, is, so if, if you're looking for development and stuff.
Yeah.
And there's a, a chunk that could be a development in, really close, that you may not wanna split it up, you know what I mean? You may not want it allowed to be split up in the future, I mean, this is far enough out, it really doesn't affect us at all.
But, yeah.
Okay, hearing that, I would entertain a motion if anybody, so.
I make a motion, we approve CSM approval for parcel number zero eight zero six, three six one, eight thousand dash zero, and zero eight zero six dash two five four dash nine eight five zero dash zero.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whoa, invoice is to be paid, it should be in front of you. Had time to review.
My question on the civic systems, so all this support that, this training, we didn't pay for that upfront.
Oh, yeah.
Some of that was included, like guys' training software, or bought the software.
So there's two separate things going on with that, so the semi-annual support fees, that's just the portion of us being in a contract for their, for Civic being our software provider. So they do all of the, so if we have a, same type of issue, we put a ticket in, they're the ones who respond, fix our system, do all that kinda stuff. The training, that was the part that, um, was approved from me.
That was about five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what that is for, um, that was from the evac, for our training.
Where, with that being said, with civics then, where does the module come into play for, like, looking at invoices and stuff?
I still need to schedule that.
Huh?
It still needs to be scheduled for.
Yeah, that would be handy to have.
It's a lot of work to implement.
Yeah, I'll bet.
Still trying to find, so, have to dedicate to it.
I'll make a motion to refer it, though, that's good.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, discussion on the geo note, are we, anything, are we gonna do that in budget or?
Uh, it's just kind of a carryover from there.
Okay.
Uh, so, okay, I did buy mine with elders for, uh, us to designate the funds. We need to either spend or move the funds by the end of July next year, so that's.
For twenty twenty-four, okay.
So that's, I mean, that's a part of our time to use it, so we'll, you know, sooner or later be better, but, um, for his recommendation, but that's our, our lawful time to.
We'll probably find out a lot when we go into budgeting.
Um, and then I did add from the last board meeting, the automatic door for the municipal building, other than proposed structure. Uh, the top has the already committed come out. Keeping track. Really active.
Okay.
So, you know, and, and I know that some road projects that need to be done.
Yeah, um, so I guess just a couple of things coming out of Public Works that we talked about. Well, several things, well, tonight, um, with the wire system study that's being done, um, is that we should probably pull both of our wells, number two, just because it hasn't been done since, we cannot find, you know, before the nineties. Also, number one down here, uh, trying to get some information from the last time that was opened up, which was probably two thousand sixteen. Especially from the company that did that, Danny and I might try both their invoices and see what was on there as well. Don't have a number, is that something we can probably look forward to? Most of our, probably Public Works, so we can do that type thing. Help with completing that study.
Yeah.
Um, also at Public Works, there was, brought up about getting, uh, four sonar. Um, basically there are a measuring device for each one of the chemicals that's, again, are lift stations, so each chemical has, I'm sorry, wellhouses, um, each one has one chloride, chlorine tank, one fluoride tank. So we'd need a total of four, um, and that would probably be about ten thousand dollars. And that was kind of a recommendation by DNR in our last inspection that was just to have a more accurate reading of having a measured device versus now it's just kinda, I call it without tape measure or, of what we're using on day-to-day basis.
Sounds good.
Something we can.
More or less.
Make a motion.
Yeah. Um, I do have a pull from our supplier, their chemicals firm. So it would be twenty-six hundred dollars per unit, but if you buy all four units, it's gonna be a dollar less per unit, so. Twenty-two hundred a piece, plus there's some labor to install and, that would probably be ten grand, just to make sure we get it all.
That's just for measuring, doesn't help with venting or doesn't help with?
All that is, is basically just a sonar radar thing that.
Yeah.
They open a thing at the top of the tank, and it's just there, mounted on the wall, at that old time, I mean, there is, things you can put on there, if the levels go wild and crazy, you know, if you're all of a sudden using this much product in a certain day or stuff like that, but it's trying to get basic.
No, I was thinking more of the mixing and the chemical and the rusting and.
Yeah, nothing for that.
Yeah.
Gonna be taken out and reinstallment of the building if we have to replace the walls.
And this was a recommendation.
Technology changes, so by the time that wellhouse actually built, there might be.
And this was a recommendation from the DNR?
Yeah.
And this was discussed at Public Works already?
Correct.
For the.
It's.
Strong.
Yeah, 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 kinda one of those things.
Huh?
We can take action.
Oh, it'd have to be on.
Can't be on the agenda. No, but it can be on the next one. But I, you know, so, I mean, we got what, seven forty remaining, if you did another eight thousand off of that, and ten, um, what's your most valuable road project, you know, is that hillside or is that the chip seal, you know what I mean?
Correct.
Not both.
I ran up to well two tonight just because I went to close windows up there. Code's really cracking up, I mean, there's weeds coming up through the tracks. Red Hawk subdivision's never been chip sealed, that's pavements from two thousand five. A light, especially with Scott's Spring of ours, and that was, did the hundred thousand dollars just to chip seal that subdivision? Probably wanna re-crack fill it, and there's some manholes that need to be adjusted, so you're talking five hundred fifty thousand just to do that. That subdivision's a little bit of a challenge, I don't know if you could necessarily just split it up, one side of the subdivision to the other side, you know, you'd have to do that all one time, if we could, I mean, I know it's not always possible.
But. What's hillside cost?
Don't have any real strong numbers, it's probably between a three and a four hundred bucks or something. We're also looking at generators, Black Earth Creek Park, you know, money that's gonna come over for that, those.
Is that, is that crack filling the Red Hawk two? And then chip seal?
Do that first?
I mean, don't you have to?
Chip seal and then, and then.
No, crack fill.
Crack fill, if possible, we'd like to crack fill first and then chip seal it. And that's what the hundred to hundred. Depending upon what kind of funding we can get.
That's something to judge.
And that's, that's what you said, a hundred to a hundred and fifty for both of those? Crack fill and.
Oh, roughly, yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to obviously get. Yeah. With fuel and oil prices and such. Questions on generators is all thing, so the list is just, we're just gonna get.
But I think we gotta start putting prices on that list and decide which one, cause I've got, I've got Ballfield, Gen Trailer, Windows in the Village Office, um, two road projects, um, cameras, you know. So I mean, there's not enough money in that pool.
Go to wash and paint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In, yeah, interior.
But we're already past, we're already past where the money goes, so.
I guess as far as you're asking about road projects, probably won't have any to members until off September. That's still on our work.
Okay, anything else, did you get the, the notice for August for the DNR to have an office?
There's something about on road projects as far as like hillside goes. For like a redevelopment, there's a potential to submit those plans for construction like.
And they are, they do that every year.
One year, then another, then eventually.
Yes, they do, they, they're doing it now too, yeah.
Yep, so there was, um. But what I'm saying is there's something, some sort of matching that exists for that kind of construction, but not for chip sealing.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
I would view, personally, I would view chip sealing and crack filling slightly more critical, but I also haven't driven up hillside, so I don't know how bad it actually is.
I guess Park can take a walk on it and see. You don't have to park G O D R. Cause there's a go under the go note?
Huh?
Yeah, this go under the go note?
Yeah, yeah. The problem is we, we've already named more projects tonight than what the go note's gonna fund.
Yeah.
I know. So I think we need to get firm prices and we need to prioritize and then figure out to get the best value of the money.
So can we wait, are we gonna wait and not take any action on the needs for the measuring?
Well.
Not on the agenda.
Do we, but isn't it, I mean, if we're using that on the go note, can't we approve it? It's a discussion and action on go note borrowing.
Right.
So I'd like to make a motion to go ahead with the.
I think we should just wait one more month.
It's discussion and action, means we can do something with it.
That's what I would like to see, but.
I see the reason not to.
Action, I, it is discussion and action, and that fund will come out of the GO, the go.
Yeah.
Discussion and action.
So I'll make a motion, we go ahead and purchase up to ten thousand for the measuring.
A second.
Any discussion? Why do you want to wait?
Just.
Why, it's not on here, it's not just.
Oh, it's, it's not listed as a line item, you mean?
Yeah, it's just not. And it's not nothing that you have to have done tomorrow, you know, it's like, you've done this for.
Definitely end of the year though, is what our.
Years, years, yeah, so I don't, one more month is not good.
I'm okay going my way, I don't want to get into another ethics battle with the paper.
Well, the problem is there is discussion, action on the borrowing and that's the money, so. I'm not worried about it.
Have you already got a second?
What?
Yeah, yeah.
What have we done in, I guess, I mean, as far as whether it's on the agenda or not, what have we done, when we discussed?
I'm sure there's been way more stuff that's been.
The streets.
Down the highway and all day.
Well, according, as long as it's, I, my understanding is discussion slash action.
Yeah.
This is under the.
That is absolutely true.
Yeah.
Under the go note, we could do it.
Yeah.
So as far as the.
Cause that's what we're spending.
Matt, it's up for discussion and purchase, you said, I thought you said twenty six hundred if we buy one at it, one at a time, twenty four?
Yeah, under so.
Each if we buy four at a time?
Yep.
And then would your staff be in installing it or is Hawkins installing it?
Hawkins would do it.
Hawkins would do it for us.
Three hours, you think I'll take a hundred and ten dollars?
Any further advice?
Ten dollars.
There's how many of them, four?
Four.
They're gonna, they're gonna install it for under four hundred dollars?
It'll be two or three hours to install, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We need to include this installation in that motion.
I think you could find it in this maintenance budget.
Okay, all right, that's where I was looking at that.
If you had to.
In there, okay.
It's all under the ten thousand.
Oh, it's under the ten, okay.
Yeah, it's all under the ten, right?
Okay.
Can answer everybody's question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports.
Thank you.
Mr. Patchen with Vanguard Commission.
We did not have a meeting and I'm trying to find our next meeting.
I believe it's, um.
Aye.
Yeah, maybe around six thirty, I mean, uh, July twenty sixth at six thirty. I think I'm gonna be around, we'll, we'll talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all I've got, Sean's got a report for us?
We've got, Sean's on that. Um, Sean's not on, right? Yeah, okay. Uh, Black Earth Fire District, we have not met, this is our last meeting, we meet tomorrow night, looking forward to that. Uh, court treasurer, financial report.
Um. Um, so all next week, I, it'll pretty much be best working in the office, I'll be in the office, but um it's my court training week, so the all day, um. Work from the back, so if you need me, you can email me, but um I'll be in class all day, Monday through Friday. But still working through getting stuff updated, um, our officer's been on vacation, so I was checking what to work on, I'm just waiting on to get back from him. Working with elders for um some tip stuff.
Okay. Financial report.
Still working with Civic, I'm getting some stuff updated, um, for funding and stuff like that for our funds, getting those cleaned up main stairs. It's like pulling a thread and up your sweater, so it's kind of saying a book. I don't know if you saw on any of the newsletters that you've received for now act twelve, um, for the municipal funding has been approved.
Eight percent? Twenty percent?
It would be.
Thirty, yeah, thirty.
Well, our increase is from our normal with, uh, by Shabara Lenny. Municipal aid is, it's increasing seventy two percent from the state, from our normal government aid to, um, what we'll be getting. And then it will be tied to the sales tax, so it'll be getting municipalities, we'll be getting twenty percent of that. Some more details are still coming through, but that's a huge one. So unfortunately, it doesn't take full effect until twenty twenty two year, um, we'll see some of it for next year, after July next year, um.
And the only strings on there, it's gotta be fire, EMS.
Um, Public Works.
Public Works.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of a.
So Public Works, I mean, encompasses quite a large.
Yeah.
Is there a budget next year to get Mike coming up?
Yeah, that's promising.
Good to hear something's happening at the.
Yeah.
Really, it's been a long time.
Okay, is that it? Dana, what?
Oh, I'm ready for this.
What's happening in there, Miss Dana?
We met on June twenty ninth and we accepted Brian Schroda's resignation, so we are now looking for a new superintendent.
He was trying to work in the, in terms.
So there's not.
Even paper.
There is nobody.
Yeah, even a double duty.
The guy's got a five percent raise for their annual raise and they are receiving now a thousand dollar per month bonus while they're taking on the superintendent. We get a new superintendent.
Is Peter Huber involved as well? Or stuff like that?
Yeah, he's doing, um.
Is that Ramona?
No, he's the chair of the, I mean, he's taking on more responsibilities, yes, and, and doing more, but I think a lot of the members.
So how is he getting paid?
He's not, it's, I mean, he gets paid as.
He's donating his time?
Pretty much. He gets paid as.
So he's doing it on main though time?
Actually even doing it after hours, so he's not interfering.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, the bills are still being paid and uh there's no discharge violations. Our next meeting is tomorrow.
Have you heard if there's any applicant, have you?
It, it just started, yeah, there hasn't even been posted out yet.
Oh, okay.
That's what tomorrow's meeting.
Okay.
Is for.
Tyler, working local?
Hmm?
Working local?
Okay. Economic development, I don't, we haven't met yet, we are trying to work to get that something going there so that we can move a little bit, but it's, you know, whole process right at the moment. And that's a big one, I mean, this park. And EMS? EMS is a work in progress, right now our next, um, open to the public meeting is tomorrow night. I've got some, um, personnel concerns, so pretty much all I can say about that, but the next meeting is tomorrow night, okay?
Notice we don't have emergency management on here, are we, is that committee ever gonna meet?
Yeah, we gotta do that soon.
Not much, but we gotta do that.
I mean, I would think that you should at least be watched.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Gateway, Hudson.
Have not met, uh, but the next meeting is set for July fourteenth, this Friday, from three to eleven.
Three to eleven, yeah.
Do you know where they meet?
Um. I was planning on attending, uh, I think I was planning on doing Zoom, but uh I believe it's Cross Plains.
The town hall.
Town hall, yeah.
And you're attending to.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, Bailey's not present. Won't do a library report. Sarah's not here, so I'm assuming, so we don't have library board or library director. All right then, we'll move right along to Mr. Patchen for Public Works.
All right, and we're gonna hand it over to Mr. Call.
Do Public Works Committee and Director Report all in one night's week, how about that?
Uh, we met June twenty first, uh, we had from the public, Andy Kemenetti was there, um, he was here in regards of the lot he owns on South Street. Wondering if the village was going to work with him or if he needed to give his own services to the lot that he's purchased. Had some discussion with that, approved minutes, uh, Sean had gave his report. Notification of transformer being delayed, now expected late August, uh, he's working on prices to unload the transformer, also working on getting plans to pour concrete pad to place the transformer on. Our next item was generators, Sean and myself have gone around the village, um, locations we're planning on having generator backup power. Went and checked those loads, sent a bunch of those numbers that we collected to Nichols Electric, who we've kind of been working with over the past, over five years as far as getting some of that information for generators. Uh, Sean said he had talked about Howard, Corning, I believe it was, um, that I had actually found that a large generator on, which got some surplus, um, to see if that was gonna fit our needs. It wasn't, maybe wasn't quite large enough, so we're not options out, and possibly by the end of the week, we'll just have some little more true numbers of what some of these costs would actually be for backup power at these locations.
Ballfield School. Their generator.
It's not big enough.
Oh, really?
It's not, it's not real, that's just like emergency lighting only.
Yeah, no, I don't remember there was one there.
Right, um, next item was a metering process, future planning, I just had a brief discussion of if you wanna look into possibly going electronic or updating our metering services. Um, with the concerns to the personnel, um, new item today, loop got hit by some crown bees a few times in the camp, uh, doing fine though. Um, no action was taken with the electric metering, um, kind of roll back into utility connections, talking with. On the Kemenetti property again, uh, South Street making a loop that would connect more water main, uh, for better water quality, better fire flow protection, also extending sewer main as well, um, South Street area. Um, next item was South Street slash Premier Co-op property, which we have in our current agenda. Uh, Nick from Town Country was here, uh, they were looking, I met with them, uh, we looked at well one, well two and our reservoir. One of the best benefits would be to pull well two and televising, also maybe pull well one, uh, we're doing a little more research of what's going on at that well, um, and that would be for possible future planning if we replace that one now. Um, had some real rough numbers that we talked about, uh, DNR does require wells to be pulled every ten years. Our next item was for well inspections and we already approved on the GO note, thank you. Well plan system, well system planning is still in progress, road capital improvement planning, uh, survey work complete. Nick and Danny had worked together with, um, some June thirtieth middles, and the next middles for some of that stuff is. Scott had wanted on there, we talked about coming in two black bears from Cross Plains Way, bridge that's there on Highway fourteen, there's a couple of large clusters of trees there. Had some residents concerned of if those trees fall across the creek, we'd be responsible for cleaning them up, should we do preventative maintenance, but they are also on private property. I was maybe gonna reach out on that subject.
All right, we got to.
Okay, um.
Take a look at them there.
They're big, luckily.
Yeah, and if they fall in.
And if they fall, they just sit there.
And if they fall into the creek, then we've got a bigger problem, so.
Um.
Is that right between, like, those two feel, you know?
Yeah.
And they're coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, lucky, yeah, as you're coming in the town.
Yeah.
Definitely some concerns and maybe even issues of getting there, might have to be a winter project when the ground would freeze or something.
Yeah, this is really.
If it would be something to go towards to take on, I mean, I do get it's preventing flooding, but it's also on private property, so that might stir some feathers.
Yeah.
Uh.
We'll give them one.
Next item was, uh, we actually took yesterday our large plow truck to Monroe, just to have a couple items looked at and. The truck kind of gone through as far as the plow equipment, seltzer equipment, dump body, what have you, um, motion was made to put some money into it. And if it's more than what was motioned, we'll come back and revisit that. Last Friday, um, there was sidewalk survey here, safe steps, kinda going around the village, looking at some of our tripping hazards and getting the prices on that. Village building repairs, uh, Scott had brought up about getting some power washing done here, issues with police garage, window replacements, what have you.
But we're just coming in on that, we'll look at that at Public Works.
Okay. There was a brief discussion about maybe a committee of Public Works from three to five personnel, and Danny was gonna look into taking it that legal and stuff like that. Brief talk about twenty twenty four budgets, um. Um, Scott has stated that due to the condition or the state of the utility, um, uh, they've been instructed not to spend much money on the project, so basically their budget would be just an operating cost, no projects. That was a meeting, it was a long one. Um, so I guess just stuff we've got going on real quick is we've been doing a lot of work with stormwater ditches, drainage ditches, since everything was so dry, um, we were able to get in and do some real brief maintenance, light maintenance. Um, some of those ditches, we got a couple yards, um, maybe a dump truck or two load of dirt out of them, so they're regraded, leveled off, seated down. Uh, did use the new back truck in some of those areas for exposing utilities, also cleaning out catch base and storm piping that was basically plugged off, and truck performed awesome. Much we did, and it's great, great piece we put with that and sleep. Right, just looking for more time to truck that everything in. Uh, sidewalk surveys being done, we did our second course of PFO sampling. Um, that's usually like a six. Those results come back. So one of the stuff, uh, samples we did was lead in copper. Those results I had to mail to those individual homes just to let them know, so Danny helped me out with getting those sent off. Well two roof is done, fan repairs for exhaust fans are done. Uh, we put some security light again, but that project is completed by me. And thank you, that was well overdue. Um, it looks very nice. If anyone's got time to drive out hillside road to check the road out, check the law house out, too. Um, meter reads for the month, and we had a few meters that we've had some issues chasing down, uh, head batteries or just property owners that had some issues as well with their meters. Got those taken care of, locates in the sweeper, and we will take a look at that next Tuesday. Um, it's kind of just torn apart right now, so we're gonna go through it, see what it needs, what we're gonna put into it, um, where things are gonna go, and make sure it's something we still wanna commit to or we wanna walk away from it. Um, they do what they want with it. Sorry.
Well, as the records show that Bailey joined us, so we will hop back up and get the library director report.
So sorry.
It's okay. Thanks for coming in.
Um, we last met on the twenty first. Um, we, I had like, I just came from another meeting. We are even different directors now. We, um, updated our collection development policy, and we also, um, put in place a library display policy that just gives us some guidelines on what we can display, um, and kind of, uh, oh, that whole process works. Um, just in the interest. And, um, other than that, it will surprise no one that most of this month, um, split the FTH design, conceptual design project. Um, so we had a lot of great input at our, um, last birth session on this. Um, and we have our next birth session on the seventeenth, that's nine AM to five PM in this room right here. Um, we have all of the architects come in for OTH, um, just drawing designs, getting feedback from the public as they're drawing, so that if somebody says, this would be really cool, but could it have like a cool feature on it? They can just draw. Um, and then there's also the advisory task force meeting, which is a public meeting, um, also on the seventeenth at six PM in this room, so if you are interested, you should. Um, and our next meeting is the nineteenth at seven PM.
Thank you, Bailey. Um, now we're back down to parks. Meeting's scheduled, I think, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that?
Yes, yes.
That's gonna say, okay.
Dirty is what I got.
Great. And then, uh. Um, Sister Park's please committee, it would be Sarah, and I'm not sure they met.
But I was.
Oh, you were there.
Yeah, we did meet.
Well, thank you, Mitch.
Um, you were there.
Yeah, that date would be most also.
Okay, the next one. Um, we just went over stats. Um, I think we talked about the parks vandalism a little bit. Um, there was nothing significant. Anything else you can think of?
Yeah, we just, um, talked about please coverage for field days and honors.
Oh, yeah.
So there'll be department from eleven AM to eleven PM, and then Calvin will be on from noon to midnight.
And he also is flexing his hour summons, staying late till like one AM.
I was gonna say, cause midnight's kinda, is that when they close the park?
No, not that night, but he's doing that now, three, four times a month.
Field days, when do they close the park?
Uh, I heard they're done, right? They close it by midnight.
Yeah, we'll be done and emptied by midnight.
So we don't think we should have somebody.
I thought Calvin was gonna stay till one, actually.
Yeah. Calvin for the time.
They, they would do whatever, whatever we ask, so.
Okay, then. Okay, fifteen. I need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, conducting other specific or specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. They have the acquisition of real estate maintenance, okay. Thank you, just read. What, you can read. Yep, I can read whole. Relating to the possible acquisition of real estate for municipal facility use, possible acquisition of real estate for road use.
I'll make that motion to go into closed session. Second.
All in favor?
Nope.
Do you have the road call?
It'll pass if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead and call.
Okay.
Yeah, for closed session.
Same where?
Here.
James Toyle?
Yes.
Scott Patchen?
Yes.
Campbell's Raisins?
Yes.
Tomorrow was absent. Tyler Mosen?
Yes.
And it's absent?
Yes.
Thank you, Bailey.
Bye.
Then thanks for coming in. You can close that door, Bailey.
Yeah, you're closing, where are you wanting to?
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, don't you know, you know, sorry.
Just taking care of.
Okay.
Danny.
Hey, what's up? What's happening?
Three seconds.
Yeah.
Or I see four.
All right.
Now that's what the recording's telling us.
We are out of open seconds. Number sixteen, consideration motion to arise from closed session or reconvene. Okay, we have nothing to take the motion on or action to be taken. Seventeen, discussion action on items from closed sessions not applicable. Eighteen, discussion budget twenty twenty four.
Okay, we're gonna need one.
Do we want Verbacher present at something like this? Budget? Budget discussions?
We do have ten, a part of our deal is ten hours of free budget prep.
I think that we use that. That's a no brainer, so then let's have a budget of the schedule.
Yeah, budget prep, yeah.
I like that.
Um, so I have this on there, we were just kinda talking to Terry about it for just kind of big picture stuff, kind of what you were talking about earlier, make our list, let's prioritize what we want to spend where. Um, if any ideas are out there, um, going around through your list so I can officially put it down, do you wanna?
Well, it's just stuff we've all talked about.
I think you should go to committees first and have the committees come back with their priority list, and then first.
But I think at the same point, we gotta start getting prices together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be taken items that are going to the goal, so. Cause otherwise you get a list, you turn it in, and now, oh, let's wait a couple more months, will we get price? Let's, let's do it and get the prices.
Right. And you're charging the committees with that cash, then, right?
I am, are you?
Yes. I agree, I mean, I agree, the committee should do the majority of those.
Yep.
Have them for, right?
But one thing for a budget consideration, isn't the monitoring? Is that coming out of a committee?
He wants to stick that into the go note. I know him.
We're waiting.
Do you have that on your go, your go note list? The Blackwood Creek monitoring cost?
No.
No.
So that, that's gonna kind of.
Not a village.
Yeah.
I, I thought that that would be something we would discuss at the, uh, the budget meeting.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
And my impression is that there's quite a bit of support from Dane County, is my understanding, on that monitoring, so.
Okay, good.
How much we might have to forward.
Then I think we should get the meeting schedules with.
Do I have it before or during the August four meeting? Do they have any meeting time?
Yeah, give them a. Don't we sometimes have like a separate, just a workshop, a budget workshop meeting?
Yep.
That's what I'm.
I think that's what we should have now. Verbacher, I mean, you wanna, they're pretty much available, and we want them available.
I can see if she's.
Cause I, I think last year.
I would make it during a board meeting, though.
No, I would do like a workshop.
I would have separate. Um, it's based upon last year's budget, right? And what we did, and where we're at.
Yeah, this year.
You know, where we're at compared to true.
Year to date, yeah.
And then, uh, go from there. But I think it's also really important to sit down with fund numbers, and maybe this is where, uh, Verbacher can help us, is, um, we really need to do utility budget this year for electric, and we need to do water. Something that we have.
Well, I think they need to help us.
Can look at, they can, I think we're gonna need help.
Right, we need to help with that.
And Ellers, well, can help us too, so.
And Verbacher has ten free, we have ten hours with them?
Yeah.
Thinking of, that could be split, I mean, five could just be.
Right, just five, yeah.
Utilities and water and five could be general budget.
But I, I think as a goal, I think it's important that we try to do that this year.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so in checking calendars.
Tuesday is August first.
That's the other thing that's on, that's number twenty, setting the August meeting date.
Okay.
If I could, I'm nervous. Is anybody opposed to moving the August meeting to August eighth?
Are you gone?
I'm gone. I'm gone the first week in August.
I am out the week.
Okay.
I'm actually out of town the first week of August.
Oh, you're out both way, okay.
I'm leaving July twenty eighth, and I get back on the fourteenth.
I'm good with the eight.
I'm good with the eight, I'm fine. James?
Yep.
We have a corner in August eighth. August eighth, that, thank you very much. Sorry about that, that was my bad.
I might be able to come in via Zoom. Busy.
So for a budget meeting then, um, is there any night of the week that's better heading into August? Cause now we're gonna be wrapping up some summer events before school starts. Um, I would maybe think with like a Wednesday night?
I'm open.
Like if we went to, you stay out fire nights, stay out, you know, like the sixteenth and the twenty third? Or why don't you just check with Verbacher on the sixteenth, twenty third, and thirtieth for those dates and see what they have available?
I don't know what the sixteenth and the twenty third means.
Okay.
Okay, twenty third or thirtieth?
Twenty third and thirtieth. You're out the twenty third too, Pam? Have Verbacher's, have Verbacher's availability the week of the twenty first and the twenty eighth.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, it'd be easier.
I'm treating the twenty third and the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good. Okay, thank you for moving the eighth. The eighth, we have dates, we'll check with Verbacher for twenty third, thirtieth, and then that, those notices will come out from Danny when it's confirmed. All good?
Yep. I'm moving adjourned.
Uh.
Any other business that can be brought before the board?
Well, we're beyond that, I thought.
Well, we just set the meeting date when we were talking budget, so.
Okay.
Um, for a potential farmer's market, I've heard a lot of people over the years wanting something like that.
They've tried it.
We have tried.
Tried it every year.
Tried it, and.
You talked to, you just seen before.
The chamber tried, we've tried, Blackwood's events, we tried.
Tried they.
Last summer they tried. Nights with the concert, we tried. And we tried, we tried at.
Wednesday afternoon.
Yeah, it is, it is a work in progress.
Yeah.
The main, the main person going for it is moving out of town.
If we could get a list of people that would bring their wares or bring their stuff and get a commitment from them.
Yeah.
Then, then Blackwood's events would move on it, or I'm sure the chamber would move on it. But it, you know, our solicitations have not developed anything.
That's all I need. And that is hard.
That was a lot of getting that, yeah.
No comment.
You know. No. You are pretty little. Anything else for nineteen for future agenda items? I think we're good for nineteen. How's it gonna be rough for the board? We've set the new, the next village date for, or meeting date for August third. I would now entertain.
I'm in the United States.
Twenty third. I would now entertain a motion.
So move.
All in favor?
Your eyes, please.
All in good eye.
Not a plausible motion anyway, so.
It's one of those things, I, same, same thing with like a coffee shop. I, I, when I first ran for the side, I was like, what do you wanna see in your project?
But with that road going through, it's.